I'll have to order this regular meeting in the Monument Town Council, Monday, October 7th, 2024. Please rise for the pledge. Ms. Simpson, will you take role, please?
Councilmember Chronic.
Here.
Councilmember Romanello.
Here.
Mayor Protem King.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Councilmember Fierretto.
Here.
Mayor Lakind.
Here.
Councilmember Kemp.
Sure.
Hey, I'm calling Mr. Mr. Cole, you are live on speakerphone. Meeting has just begun. Next up on our agenda is disclosures of conflicts of interest. Have you gotten any conflicts of interest from any council members?
I'm glad to hear this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to approval of the agenda and the consent agenda.
No change.
Anybody have any issues with the agenda or the consent agenda? If not, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Simpson?
Mayor Protem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Kempel.
Yes.
Mayor Lakind.
Yes.
Councilmember Fierretto.
Aye.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Romanello.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that motion passes seven to zero. We'll move on to our first item. Now, this is a little unusual for those who are participating at home, but we are having an executive session that we will be doing in council chambers. And there is one person that will be joining us remotely. So I apologize, but I will have to ask those of you who are not part of the executive session to please step out inside the hallway. Can I get a motion to move into executive session?
And make a motion to move into executive session pursuant to 24-6-402 sub four sub E CRS to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators regarding future water system.
Second.
You know, a motion and a second, Ms. Simpson.
Mayor Protem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanello.
Yes.
Councilmember Kempel. Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Mayor Lakind.
Yes.
Councilmember Fierretto.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, at this time, I will ask those that are not participating, unless you have cookies, to she knows who I'm talking about. No cookies today. All right. Thank you, everybody. It will be done as soon as possible.
I just want to let the individuals that are dialed in that will be muting the mic and turning off the camera and will return once you're out of
Did they hear you say that? You're, you're, okay, perfect. Okay, we are back from executive session. Thank you all for your patience. The next item on our agenda is the Monument Lake Trail Wildfire Mitigation Demonstration Project. And Jonathan Bradley from Monument Fire is going to be presenting.
Thank you very much. This project actually started a conversation that happened with Cassie Olgrin back in March. She asked the fire department, you know, if we can provide some expertise on this particular area, south of Monument Lake, that borders Lake of the Rockies subdivision. The town had planned on doing some work. Well, it passed for a couple of months and the fire district had received a grant for a three wildfire protection plan. Within that grant was money for a demonstration area for wildfire mitigation. And those two projects lined up. So the grant maker has approved the funds to be used on this particular site. And what we're asking for is your approval to move forward with the project. And what we are going to try to accomplish is create an area where we can demonstrate to the community what a safe wildfire mitigation project is. Timber, shrub, grasses. It'll be done by professionals. And we plan on having interpretive signs with before and after photos for people to say, hey, what could I do on my property as well? They could walk down the path, have a look at what work is done, and then they can duplicate that on their properties as well. And it also is paid for by the grant and the town doesn't have to put in any financial resources. So what we really want to look is, this is the beginning of under the a partnership where the town helps us with wildfire mitigation education. Because as we know, wildfire doesn't respect political boundaries. All of our neighboring unincorporated areas are affected by fires that could start in the town and vice versa. And we want to partner with you as the town to continue to do projects like this. So and this is what it would look like. It's about three acres and we have taken into account the mouse habitat. So the work would be done during the, during the period of time where the mouse is going to be hibernating. I didn't know we did that. So you'll see the mouse set back in the yellow. And we will delete a couple of areas where there is some other wildlife habitat. You know, accomplish the work that the town wanted to do to satisfy the Lake of the Rockies homeowners as well as, as create the demonstration. So I did have a retired state forester here with me earlier today and he was unable to stay. So I'm going to go ahead and try to talk about his part as well. What we really want to do is begin to restore the forest to what it looked like decades before. We want to have more of a fire adapted community, much like it was at the turn of the previous century. Reducing the amount of ladder fuels, which are, for us, is a lot of scrub component, which will allow fire to climb up into the trees in this demonstration area will be able to show it off. We want we want to make sure that we, when we have a fire situation, you can see on the right side of this photo, you had minimal impact on the opposite side of the road for areas that had mitigation, where the shrub component was really reduced and eliminated in areas. And we want to make sure that our area looks more like the side of the road on the left. Some of the things that we really are going to begin to having an impact, if you look at the second bullet, insects and disease, it's coming. We are starting to see more and more mountain pine beetle hit in the east. It's moving towards us. We do know that we have high water sources seasonally here. And then we always have people. So the more people we add in the area, the more opportunities we'll have for catastrophic fire. I just want to bring your attention to another kind of photo from back in the early 1900s of what some of our landscape looked like and what it looks like today. So the top photo, it's, I believe, around 1920.
That's spruce?
Right. So there is some spruce component and there's a lot of
No, it looks like spruce mountain. Is that the
No, this is, this is up Castle Creek.
Okay.
Yeah. So a little north of us, you can see the amount of vegetation that's grown in the last hundred years. And part of that is the total suppression policy. We've not allowed the natural process or removal of vegetation, the understory. And as you know, some of the areas that we have will become oversaturated with vegetation. This is what we have. A lot of times in our dense forest on the left, we have trees that have what we call core bigger. We want to be able to show what it looks like to cut that back and create space for some of our larger trees to grow. So you'll see some of these smaller trees, like on the left side of that photo, are the same age as the big robust trees. But they're less susceptible to disease, infestation, and will have a shorter lifespan in general. So removing some of those trees will ultimately help the forest. We also don't want to remove all the dead and drowned. It does, I'm sorry, all the standing dead. Because it does provide habitat for nesting birds and other small creatures. So if we have an opportunity, we'll leave some of the standing dead. We'll do that. We don't want to completely remove all of the wildlife habitat. We want to move through this quickly in case you all have questions for us. That's really all I have.
Questions from the council?
Well, I think this is a great idea.
So do you agree? From an approval standpoint, I mean, you, you had mentioned you wanted our approval.
Well, it's on town property.
I'm sorry?
It's town property.
So are we going to create a resolution to support this? Or is it just a nod? You're asking us to allow the
Burn the town project, like you said, it's just presentation, right?
Yeah, so
Just to clarify, you're not burning town property. No.
Mechanical, no burning.
There's no burning. There's no burning going on.
It's all mechanical.
You're like woodchipping.
This is not that. This is, it's only three acres. It's
I understand. I didn't want to know if he's burning the house down.
So some of it will be mechanical fitting with mastication, some will be fitted and fitting with chainsaws. And then the material will be either chipped or masticated and left on, on the site. Because that's part of actually returning some of the materials and stuff.
Okay. I guess, Mr. Cole?
Well, I would recommend that we do ultimately have an agreement that, that says they'll, they'll meet their prescription. They'll have a prescription that they're going to work under, that they'll meet that, that you authorize them to do that within the defined area.
Is that an MOU?
A contract. It could be a simple contract, but needs to be
Not one that requires us to go into executive session and
You know, it's all up to you.
So, so I, I've been back there several times. I've walked down that way a lot and it's a pretty nice area there, but it is pretty dense. So how, how, how much percentage wise do you think you're going to take out of there? Is it going to still remain like a forest or is it going to be just a few trees?
Very few trees.
There will be very few trees left.
Trees that come out.
That come out.
So most of the shrub underneath the drip line are large trees.
Right.
That'll come out. We'll, we'll keep some stands of oak that are outside of the drip line of those trees and limb them up and remove some of the understory. But there are some other species of shrub that we do want to keep. They're kind of closer to the dam. They're a little less volatile in a fire situation and provide some habitat for, for some of the ground nesting animals. So that would stay. It's mostly going to be removing some of the suppressed trees, like in that one photo I showed you.
Just to make it more healthy.
Make it more healthy. And there's also a lot of decadent, almost dead oak brush out there. It's probably in the age of 100 to 150 years. It's in the process of dying, messed up with that con.
Right, right. Okay.
So very few trees and almost none of the mature trees.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
How long have you been doing this?
In our service, twenty-three years.
Let the man do his job.
I wanted to know if he was lighting a match first.
Oh, it sounds very like methodical and controlled. That's, that's how I took it. Thank you.
It'll be managed by a forester.
Hmm.
Is it?
Oh, make sure.
One question, not related to this project, but possible future projects, working with the Monument Fire Department, since you guys have, you guys are getting this equipment and gear. Is there, a lot of the communities are fire wise, but there's also mitigation measures that they have to do? Is that, is there a possibility of setting up some kind of schedule where you go to the different communities? And if they, if they organize and bring their, their fallen branches and whatnot, that you guys would have a chipper to
We already worked between nineteen and twenty-six. I tell you right now, we're running out of capacity with our current public with that. We're aware there's three or four times more than we even got the ability to meet. But yes, the short answer is yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, y'all. Appreciate it. Okay, next up, ordinance number 202024, and ordinance amending titles three and five regarding revenue and finance.
There's
Oh, sorry, energy, energy project. Sorry, I was just skipping over you, Madeline.
So this is a presentation from Vergey to talk about our energy savings project and kind of go through, we're at the 90% phase of design. So Oscar Rangel from Vergey will present that information for you.
Who do you mean? Thank you.
Thanks for hanging with us.
No, thank you. It's good to see you again. I was here at the beginning of the year, beginning of the spring. And I, I was here updating you on your, on your project. So thanks. So we're going to do a little recap of what I presented last time. And then we'll talk about where we are today. We'll go a little bit on finance, how business is going to look like. And then the timeline, and then if you have any questions. So great. So at the last meeting, I presented to you the milestone, sixty percent milestone, where we presented all the measures that we were going to implement. And, and some of them were lighting retrofit for the old lighting that you have, some building envelope. Also paid a look at the HVAC system for town hall and 259. And also the installation of some solar and battery storage. And we also asked you at that time to, to approve the town to go after the Olin and also the Colorado Energy Office grant that they had at the time. So this is exactly where we are under the Colorado Energy Office process, where our ninety percent milestone. So we have presented this to staff back on September 25th. And I'm really happy to tell you that we do have a project. We are at the ninety percent pricing of the project. So we have vetted contractors that have gone through the buildings and they have provided their pricing, their final pricing. And so the good news is that we are going to be able to take care of all the challenges that we presented back at the sixty percent. So we're going to take care of the lighting. I don't know if you knew, but last year, the state passed the Hill House Bill 231161, where you will not be able to buy fluorescent lights anymore after January 1st, 2025. So this takes care of that problem. So you don't have to run to eBay. I'm going to stock up on eBay for trying to get your eyesight. They go out. So we're going to improve insulation and reduce energy costs. We also are going to improve, we're going to replace the infrastructure of this building on the HVAC side and 259. And we're going to solve the air distribution problem that we have in this building. So that's huge.
And that This room feels fine to me. I don't know.
Now it is warm. Yeah.
This feels
For this moment.
Yes. We're going to offset utility costs by putting rooftop solar on this building and on 259. And hopefully, we will also put battery storage. And why I say hopefully is because we went for a grant. So we, the town received an award from the Department of Local Affairs, $100 million. We also applied for the Colorado Energy Office Public Building Electrification for the replacement of the units on this building. We will know about that grant in maybe next week. So, and then there is the microgrid grant that we will have to apply for that one on the next cycle because we are partnering with MBEA on that one. So, so that can happen too. So so go ahead. And so what we have done, and we have two options at this time at the ninety percent. Because we have only received one grant, which is the $500,000 from the Department of Local Affairs. We have option A. And option A, it has a total cost of 1.4 million with a town contribution of 250,000. If you recall, at that time, we talked that the town has 250,000 to put into the project. And then you also have 500,000 from the Department of Local Affairs. So this project takes care of everything but the, the units on the roof of this building. So it is viable. It is, it is self-funding with savings. The rest of the, of the financing now is self-funded through savings that we guarantee. And it is for sixteen years. Now, when we get the other grant, which we're expecting next, or the week after, then we can do everything. We can do also the units on top of this, of this building. Then the total cost of the project goes up to 1.8 million. However, the, because of the financing and all that, we have extended the payback is twenty years. That is currently where we are. We had a conversation on financing with town staff. And I believe that we agreed that there is a path for that. Plus, we are on the hook for the savings. We don't need the savings. You're right, you're a child. So you can pay for it. We're not. So with that, go ahead. Thanks. With that, that is our timeline that we have. So we have our meeting today. We have some administrative work that we're currently doing. We're finalizing the report that is going to go to the Colorado Energy Office and to the town administration for their review. And also at the same time, once we get the, the grant, then we'll put the contract together for the project. And also there will be a financing contract. And we are hoping to approve it by November 18th. If that doesn't happen, then we'll move to December. So with that, I will question.
Can you go back to option A slide?
Sure.
Is there an option B?
Yes.
I designed, did I, did I miss that? Oh. That's the 1.8.
Yes.
Okay, that one I didn't see.
It does everything.
That, that does everything.
Yes. Yes.
It would be a real shame to not upgrade the equipment on this building.
Yeah, and we are, we are definitely trying to we put our best. I think that between us and administration, put a very good narrative for them to, to award. We heard that there are twenty-five communities that are requesting money. However, they are trying not to provide that to the front range, but to outside of the front range. And I tried to figure out, are we able to front range? So, so, but Denver, for example, has five requests. And I don't, I think they're going to, I think we have a chance.
Okay, so what have we budgeted for this so far?
We budgeted 200, the 250,000. So we've already been in talks with Nate for the other 250,000 that we would have to do a short term finance for. And so he hasn't gotten us that information back yet, but he's working on that.
Okay.
He, he was going to maybe be here tonight, but maybe it got too late or happens.
Question on the on project B, which I hope we end up going with. It's a 20-year finance term. What is the warranty on the HVAC systems? Because I know that they're pretty expensive. Twenty-five years, okay.
Are already above that. You're twenty years, I think yours.
What about the solar panels and the batteries? What are the life expectancy of those?
The solar panel is 25 to 30 years.
It's the life expectancy?
Yes, of the panels. The inverters, though, they need to be replaced every 10 years. So we have included that into the
And what about the batteries?
On the batteries is 20 years also. However, we haven't applied for that one yet. Because that, we're going to pull that one face two.
All right.
Those are lithium batteries?
Those are batteries, yes.
Lithium?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And we have space in this building for, I mean, what, how many batteries are talking here? 20, 30?
I, I don't have the exact number, but I don't believe they're going to be put inside of the building. They're going to be fully on the outside. I'm not fully clear on that.
In this weather?
No, well, yeah, it is a, it can be outside.
Yes, just not exposed.
Yes.
So that means another she shed.
That's what she said. That's what Laura said.
I'm agreeing with you. She, she shed for the batteries. Okay. Any questions?
That's it. Any question? Thank you very much. No, this
Thanks again for the update. Look forward, we look forward to hearing good news and email next week.
Good news.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we'll move on to ordinance 202024. An ordinance amending titles three and five regarding revenue and finance and business licenses and regulations of the Monument Municipal Code. Doug Stallworthy.
I'm going to take this one.
I figured. I don't see Doug here.
Yes. So you've seen this before. This is, again, our first effort at amending your code to come into
amending your code to come into compliance and full-scale effort to amend your code to come into performance with your home rule charter. We start with, uh, titles three and five because we're also working on those with your sales tax self-collection provision. So it was, uh, having spent so much time looking at those, uh, it would, it was, uh, very efficient to dive into those. From, uh, the version you saw on the sixteenth, the only revision is, um, on page eighteen of thirty-six of the, of the, uh, exhibit in section five point three-two oh five oh. And that sets up the, uh, opportunity for the hearing officer to be appointed by the, the council as an independent third party or even a, a third-party body. Uh, and so otherwise, the revisions that are shown in these sections are, are what you looked at, um, at your last meeting. Are you happy to answer any questions?
Questions from the council?
Um. Very wonderful. Well, that's, thank you.
I, I have a couple of small ones, but on three dot twenty-eight dot zero eight zero, um, paragraph A, four lines down, uh, town is misspelled.
Oh, good. Yep, I see that.
So that's minor.
We need to correct that.
Um, and then I just, I have a question about the, the, the use taxes on there. So is it that, um, construction materials that come into the town that are purchased outside of the town? And so the use taxes generally to mitigate somebody buying materials from outside and bringing it in without the town collecting taxes, is that pretty much how that works?
Like the sales tax, correct.
Okay, cause on here it says two percent, which is lower than our existing tax on three dot ten. And then there's use, there's use tax for construction vehicles and things like that. How does that, is that like on the, is that the, is that a voluntary reporting system or is there any way to, do we audit that or do you have any idea? It's probably a Madeline question.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know the mechanics of that.
Okay, and it probably is outside the purview of our discussion tonight, but I was just looking at that and seeing that.
Could you refer me to me to the section though that has the two percent you were talking about?
Yeah, three dot one zero dot zero one zero.
Three zero.
Page twenty-four.
There you go. Even better.
Page twenty-four.
Of, of, of the code itself?
Oh, of the, of the page of the packet.
Oh, on the packet?
Yeah.
Page, uh, let me find it.
Be right there, more sure. Right there. Forty-five.
Well, I'm not seeing.
Around that area. Packet.
Look at the bottom, it's page twenty-four.
Thirty-six.
No, it doesn't say a page of thirty-six, so I'm not sure where this came out of.
Something different.
Maybe it's some other part of this.
What's the number? Three-ten? I'm gonna see what you're, where you got three-ten.
I don't know where I got it.
Is it the appendix?
No. I don't know, I just printed, I just printed it out.
Tax, there's the next one is the tatty toe.
Oh, six, yeah, it's all sexually oriented businesses. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure where I got it.
Mr. King, I think you're in, uh, in the next agenda.
Okay, then never mind.
Okay, we'll get back to the ordinance, uh.
I got the first one right, the second one we'll talk about later.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments, uh, for staff or Mr. Cole on this particular ordinance?
If there is a motion to approve, we would appreciate that include the correction of the one misspelling of the word town.
Ken, anything?
And I'm just kind of I don't know, shocked and surprised that we're actually in here, that ordinances were discussing probably, um, businesses that I, I know I wouldn't want, I'm sure a lot of residents would want, but the sexually orientated businesses and.
The First Amendment.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't. I'm just, I, I get it, but it's, it's part of our code already. The code already contains it.
And, and you probably want a code to cover. To cover that versus no code at all and good luck with that.
And we're not gonna read from the code to just discuss what those businesses are.
Yeah.
So.
Steve, since you know where that, um, where that, um,
Correction.
Correction is, do you want to do the motion? Cause we, we need to specify where that correction.
Get rid of it.
Oh, sure.
Three, three point two eight point four eight zero.
Point.
Subsection A.
Line four.
Okay, we're on twenty twenty-four?
Yep.
I mean, twenty dash twenty twenty-four. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty dash twenty twenty-four and ordinance amending titles three and five regarding revenue and finance and business licenses and regulations of the Monument Municipal Co, Municipal Code. Um, with the correction on section three dot twenty-eight dot zero eight zero, um, paragraph A, fourth line, change the word toe to town.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Simpson.
Tim King?
Yes.
Councilmember people?
Yes.
Councilmember chronic?
Yes.
Mayor LaCaine?
Yes.
Councilmember Frito?
Aye.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanelle?
Yes.
That motion passes seven to zero. Next up, ordinance twenty-two dash twenty twenty-four and ordinance repealing and re-adopting chapters three dot one-two and section five dot one-two dot zero one zero and adding chapters three dot zero eight, three dot zero nine, three dot ten, three dot eleven, and three dot thirteen and section five dot twelve dot triple zero of the Monument Municipal Code regarding revenue and finance and business license and regulations. I do not see Mr. Mer, oh, there he is, Mr. Murray.
My mic is, uh, turned off here, but, um, I'm gonna be sharing the screen.
Turned off?
Oh, I got it on.
Okay.
So we're good. Um, I will be sharing the screen for Sophia. She'll be presenting.
Kind of going over the highlights of this ordinance, um, there's a lot of new sections because there was no sales tax ordinance before. Um, so with the move towards self-collection, we need to adopt a sales tax ordinance administration um, and, and all the language that goes along with that. Um, we are gonna just discuss the background of, you know, how we got to this format and, um, go over, uh, a couple of highlighted items that we'd like your input for. Um, so really what we're doing is repealing the construction use tax, which is only the only tax section of your code currently. And we are going to move that and, um, into a new section. But we're starting off with general definitions and, and general terminology, then going into sales tax, then going into use tax, and then all of the, um, taxpayers' responsibilities in each of the separate sections. So that's why we're starting with three point zero eight and then a construction use taxes within the use tax section of the revised code. Um, we are amending a couple of sections in five dot twelve only, um, to tie in the business license requirements with the tax like CP. So, um, you can, uh, go forward to the next slide. Um, so with the home rule status, we wanna look at other home rule codes and also, you know, what you currently tax as a state-collected, um, city. And so what you tax now is what you can only tax going forward unless you go through an election and agree to tax more, um, from who you're people. So, um, you can adopt additional exemptions for the tax code if you need. Um, but we wanted to make sure that our code that we're putting together is, um, not gonna violate any taper clauses as it is. Uh, we also wanted to make sure we're using standardized definitions. Uh, Colorado Municipal League has come together with multiple cities, um, several years back in twenty seventeen and created standardized definitions. So from when you go to different cities, each city defines something the same way. That's why businesses going between the different cities know that, you know, candy is defined as candy here. It's the same over here. Um, we also wanna pull in certain definitions from the state code that are specific to your taxation and exemptions that you already have. And then, um, we added in the marketplace facilitators and economic nexus language. And that was also a Colorado Municipal League model ordinance project where all the cities agreed to come together with the same language defining what a marketplace facilitator is and when remote sellers have nexus and have to charge tax. Um, the last part is there is a simplified sales and use tax hearing process that goes once, um, an administrative hearing has been exhausted at the local level, then there's a standardized process at the state. So we wanted to make sure and to include that process, which, and the simplified rules reference in the monument presented code. Uh, so the areas, uh, that where we wanna bring up decisions for the council are the following up here. Um, I have slides that actually are gonna go into these in a little bit more detail, so, um, go forward. So, uh, there, there's two items to determine whether you want to, uh, continue to tax them. Um, that's candy and essential hygiene products. Candy is currently taxed at the state of Colorado if it is just a sugary gummy bear, but if it has flour in it, like a Kit Kat or Twix, they don't find that as candy. So, um,
My DVD says.
Currently you are getting taxed on candy because of your following of the state, um, process.
Clear.
But, um, and that, you know, it's just some cities don't tax candies, some do, some follow state. So that would be a decision to be made. Um, I do have a couple of numbers on what that might look like based on the state's evaluation when they implemented the tax on candy. Um, it's about point seven, eight, three percent of your total revenue. Um, if it's what the state said with their research and that costs, if you were to exempt it, that would cost the city about ninety-seven thousand dollars a year in taxes.
That's a lot of candy.
That's a lot of candy.
We have a lot of dentists, so.
And then, and then, and then on that subject, if, if, if we exempted, let's just say, doesn't that create a difficulty for the merchant to try to figure all this stuff out? I mean, how do they, how do they even go about doing that?
Be, because they've been following the state here. I mean, you notify, you know, Target or Walmart or King Supers. They're familiar with those types of changes and they probably have a variety of tax matrices, um, across different cities of both taxable and those not. But it would be something that we'd need to notify the businesses of, you know, you're no longer going to tax this if you desire to change it when you implement the code.
We're taxing it today.
Yes.
Great. Just wanna make sure I'm reading that right.
Yeah.
No change.
The other hot topic is essential hygiene products. Um, and across the state and across multiple states, um, this has been, become a bigger issue of the cost of incontinence products and menstrual products. And, um, that one is, you know, either affecting, you know, the newborns or the elderly. Um, and the incontinence products are extremely expensive. Um, so the state implemented an exemption a few years ago. Um, and so if you were to tax it, you would be taxing it, but if someone who goes to King Supers wouldn't pay the state taxes on it. So they wouldn't pay El Paso County or, um, the state base rate. So, um, sometimes that becomes a hot topic item that more people may come to you in the future and asking for such an exemption. Um, the estimated cost is about point three percent on your budget for revenue. So it's about potentially thirty-seven to forty thousand dollars a year in taxes on essential hygiene products. Um, so.
But that's.
Yeah, candy's different.
Yeah. It's optional.
Yeah.
Double tax the candy in.
Double tax the Kit Kats.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, it's flour. Yeah, there you go.
That is ridiculous.
So those are the two taxation exemption questions that we made. We wrote them into the country as acne candy, yes, keep it as is and, uh, potentially added the exemption for essential hygiene products. Um, so with the, you guys have any questions on this particular area?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, the other items are more procedural. Uh, so the vendor's fee cap, vendor's fee is basically when someone files a timely sales tax return, they're allowed to take three point three percent of the taxes that they currently owe the city and keep them. Um, and that has been, that's coming from the state, that three point three percent rate. Um, a lot of cities have either totally done away with the vendor's fee. Um, you know, to budget for their own costs and not letting taxpayers keep any money. Um, or they've given a cap on the amount you can take for returns. So just for some numbers for you, um, based on twenty twenty-three's revenue totals, your vendor's fee, if all of those people actually took it at the state, which we don't have that fine level fine, uh, point data, we only have the taxes, so we cut out the back end to it. If all of them took it, it would be four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars for the year. Um.
That we would lose?
That you're currently not getting.
Why aren't we getting it now?
Um, so if you were, if you're going self-collected, you can choose to either have a vendor's fee, have a limited one, or have no vendor's fee. So.
We are not getting a vendor fee today.
Currently you are allowing vendors to have that if they're efforts of collecting a three point one three percent.
Yeah.
Half a million dollars? Oh, what? How did that happen?
But this is, this is where switching to home rule, right? Okay.
So it was statutory, we couldn't do it anyway.
Right.
So it's really not a loss.
It's, we're gaining, yeah, we're gaining.
It wasn't happening.
It wasn't happening, so we're.
So the, the question is whether we put in place a vendor fee.
Whether you do away.
Do away with it.
If we do.
Or do away with a portion of it.
If we do away with it, we, we regain half a mil.
Right. Um, but, but a cap of a hundred dollars, which is what we proposed in the code. Um, then you would, your cost would go from four hundred and twenty-eight thousand to, down to a hundred and forty-six thousand a year. So there's about seventy-five tax returns a month that are over the hundred dollar limit based on the numbers you looked at. So that's about ninety thousand dollars a year. So you're limiting those people who really are about three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars with four hundred and twenty-eight down to ninety thousand. So that's the biggest vendors. So the biggest vendor are earning the most amount of taxes to you. And you're limiting them, maybe not the small businesses. Small businesses would be about fifty-six thousand a year in the vendor's fees if you kept them at three point three percent. So that's one idea. You could play with the rates for sure. Um, other towns have done two point five percent instead of three point three three and a cap. I don't know what your thoughts are, but I wanted to kind of give you some numbers. It's, that's a lot of money to consider. I don't know what your thoughts are, but I wanted to kind of give you some numbers, that's, that's a lot of money to consider. If you can jump to some other items, but I just want to make sure. Any questions on the vendor's fee stuff?
So your proposal. Would bring to the town roughly, you said three, three hundred thousand? Okay. And. It would. Would it benefit, i- is this, okay, tell me if this is correct. It would benefit more the small businesses than the big businesses?
Yes.
Okay. Whereas the smaller businesses have. A greater take or whatever the purpose.
That's a lot of money.
So I have to ask, with all of these items. Are we having to give up half of it to the IGA with Tribune?
Under the current agreement.
But when the, when the current agreement was written, we were not home rule, we were statutory.
So the ads from initial revenue from. Reducing the vendor's fee, I guess I.
Because the IGA is only covers the sales tax within the Tribune limits, not across the town.
That's true.
Because we're home rule now and not statutory.
I don't know the answer to that without.
All right, thank you, you can. Continue.
A manual paper filing fee is what we propose. We have an electronic system that we're investing a lot of time in. Efforts to get set up for everyone to be able to pay their taxes. And then also a lot of the taxes are paid in through the state electronic system that distributes half the money to every home rule jurisdiction. So there's two methods where they can already pay online and they can remit their taxes. And so we're proposing a manual filing fee so to basically not as their revenue source, but to discourage. Paper filing of tax returns. And the interest, currently the state tied it to a standard banking commission rate. So it fluctuates every year and that would require changes into the tax system every year to, you know, program that. And it's hard to deal with back taxes though. Particular time, most home rule cities just charge a flat one percent per month. And the system is set up for the one percent per month as well, so we proposed one percent per month on late filings. And then the fraud penalty. Currently with the state, it's a hundred percent if someone is assessed a fraud penalty. That's a hard assessment to make, but is then the preponderance of evidence becomes on the pound. But if it was necessary, then if someone owes thirty eight hundred dollars in taxes, they owe, you know, thirty eight hundred. Dollars more in penalty plus all the interest. The proposed is fifty percent potentially or a hundred percent, most towns and cities do fifty percent. The standard penalty is ten percent for late filings. So if standard is ten, then when you assess fraud, you're going up another level. It's up to you all what you want to think about having.
It's the percentage of businesses that are fraudently. There's no data on it?
I haven't seen that from this date.
We have any idea what we've encountered working with the state from a fraud perspective?
The state does not give us that type of information, we just get the site data.
I guess we could find, I mean, I guess over time, if this becomes a problem, we can change it, right?
What's the ordinance written as fifty or a hundred?
Well, we don't, we don't have it now because we get it from the state.
No, the ordinance that we're going to vote on. And what, what, given that you said there are other municipalities that are doing fifty, what, do you have an example?
So Denver does fifty, Lafayette does fifty. There's quite a few of northern cities, I'm not sure about Castle Rock, I think Colorado's greatest fifty percent. Yeah, that's, that's definitely a probably a rare one to charge, but. You know, if, if it does become a problem, instead of always increase it, you'd start it at the.
Two percent?
Hundred percent. Okay, a special penalty for repeated enforcement, so. This is proposing the greater of the twenty five percent of the tax or two hundred and fifty dollars. This would be for people who are regularly, you know, not filing, we have to assess them, we have to potentially place one. And they do it more than three times in three, in three years. That we would add in a special penalty if it happens again. So that's in several codes and used only for when with entry, but you know. Hard to, hard to comply tax payers. Let's see. Fee for audits, so there are some cities and towns that. Create a potential fee to backfill the tax payer for the length of time that an audit would take. Generally, I see this applied when they forced the auditors to go out of state to get the records. So they charge the auditors and, you know, fill that taxpayer for the travel costs and expense. Also, I've seen it applied when they continually like don't give you the right records and they're kind of trying to. You know, along with the process, then they charge an hourly rate for the audit. You know, it could be available, it could be assessed on a case by case basis, or if there are certain cities that it's tough at. No matter what, if they have to go get the records somewhere. When I was with Denver, we had a budget for audit travel because I had forty auditors. And we only paid, we paid if we could coordinate an audit trip together with multiple taxpayers, but if. One taxpayer says you have to come here, then we'd make them pay for that trip. So that's just written into the code for those particular cases that may arise. I think that's all I have in the special section, I know there's a lot of content too.
Amazing, by the way. I mean, really, I, I had no idea that, that all this stuff even went on, but. Yeah.
Train die.
Yeah, really glad that you're here guiding us through this.
It's impressive, it, yeah.
On the use, on the use tax, right. How does, how does, how does that work in, in, in the scope of things? Particularly on this one section, it says there's hereby levied and there shall be. Collected and paid a use tax of two percent by every person exercising the taxable privilege of using or consuming. In the town, construction materials, construction equipment for a period of more than thirty days consecutive. And then there's another section that talks about if it's under nine days.
County and get the special mobile equipment and other tax records that you're doing in audit to see if they've paid enough taxes. But the language in the less than thirty days versus thirty days preparations is standard across. All those cities and towns around you, and that allows that if, you know, they're working in. Our springs for a while that they would pay the tax due to our spring, that. If it's there long enough, then Monument would give credit saying, okay, you paid enough tax. Or if Monument's rate is higher, then Monument would get the next tax on that equipment. So it's, construction equipment is a little bit tricky, but. The whole construction use tax is a lower rate than your standard sales tax. Which creates a little bit of a disparity if a business comes forward and goes through the permit process. They're going to be gaining a flat two percent on, you know, the material valuation of that permit. And then they go to their suppliers and they don't pay additional tax because they use that permit of kind of like a prepayment. I've paid my taxes. But if they don't go through a permanent process, then they're paying a three point five percent sales tax. When they go buy any construction materials. So town has a similar rate applied, but that would be a taper. Question to the voters to increase your motor vehicle tax rate and your. Construction use tax rate to be the same as sales tax, so that you would be charged the same rate whether you buy it. You know, in one type of transaction versus a different type of transaction. Both construction permits and construction equipment. Probably need to have an auditing process ideally where, you know, we could ask the permit holders. For, you know, a list of their construction equipment, we can ask them for, you know, all their materials and determine is the. You know, amount that they declared to us at the beginning, actually the same amount they finished with. Especially with the cost of materials rising, you really have to. Have a process in place to double check some of these big construction companies, especially if they're having a lot of home building or custom homes built. You know, the materials in there are much more expensive and valued higher and generally. So we want to always kind of double check the use tax process. And we have some ideas for that. But the code is just kind of the general outline of how we could apply those taxes. And then procedurally, we've set up the reconciliation process for the permit department and tax department together.
So if, if, if a, if a contractor is building a house, let's just say. And they go outside of the town and pick up their own materials in an incorporated county area and bring them in. There's no mechanism outside of the town to charge the sales tax for that. If they had them, if they had it delivered from a big supplier, then where the delivery drop off point is, they would charge them the sales tax there and. And remit it here, so otherwise it would be either part of the use tax or a, on the honor system, so it's.
Well, I was going to ask, what's our mechan, what are we doing with all the development going in and the materials being brought into the town? What is being done to ensure that the use tax is being applied, since I'm guessing that. The developers are not running into Home Depot and buying lumber packs.
Well, if, if it's a lumber pack from like Prosource or something, they would collect the tax there because they're charging for the drop off point. It would be if somebody took their own trailer out and picked up something from someplace else and brought it in. That's why there's a use tax generally anyway.
The town doesn't currently have a complimentary use tax, the general use tax. And that would be if, if you bought non-construction materials, if you bought a table. From, you know, somewhere else and you shifted to your place and you're not. The vendor not licensed or required to charge Monument tax. Then they could just charge the state tax on it or no tax and Monument resident would pay no additional tax on it. Versus going to Pools and buying their table, they have to pay the sales tax, you know, down the street. So that's another consideration for a ballot proposal, like even the playing field. Many cities have a general use tax with kind of on a self-reported basis, but it comes through with a lot of audit revenue. To even the playing fields, so that people aren't going outside a monument to buy their stuff cheaper. Because they have to pay tax. But you guys don't have that currently, when you have to go through a valid election to add.
So on that, on that use tax, that's two percent, when our sales tax, what, three and a half, is that what it is? So there's a one and a half percent spread if they have a permit, right? So we're losing on that.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay, but that would be a ballot issue.
Okay, uh, thank you for that, what, any other questions? Mister Cole.
New agreement, I believe that the increased revenues from. Increasing vendor fees. For sales within the Tribune.
So what about the, what about the management costs of that, is that taken off the top? As far as, you know, we're, we're the ones collecting the tax and paying. For the software and the people and all that other stuff, does that come off the top?
There was no software developed back then.
Yeah, but there's software developed now, so.
But, but that's a good point, we, we shouldn't be paying, if, if, if we're doing the work. We, that, that should come off. Yeah.
Right, administrative costs.
Yeah.
Another discussion point.
Yeah, we can approach Tribune to see if they're willing.
All right, other questions, comments?
Thank you.
For Socia. Assuming that Steve, Steve and Lori are, are helping out and you guys are loving what's common, right? Guys, good. All right, if there are no questions, comments or concerns, then. Oh, this, this last one was a public hearing item, we did not, you did not stop me to open the floor up.
Oh, oh, that's right.
Okay, well, this one I have not done that, so this is a public hearing item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, thank you, we will open this up for public comment on whether or not we should approve or deny, speak for or against ordinance twenty 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 four. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? Seen none, Will, is there anybody online that would like to speak?
There are no hands raised, mayor.
They're all in bed.
Yes, they are. And I see that our, our Cookie Monster has left and has went online. Okay, then I will bring it back to the council for further discussion or motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty two dash twenty twenty four. An ordinance repealing and re adopting chapter three dot twelve and section five dot twelve dot zero one zero. And adding chapters three dot zero eight, three dot zero nine, three dot ten, three dot eleven and three dot thirteen. And section five dot twelve dot triple zero of the Monument Municipal Code. Regarding revenue and finance and business licenses and regulations.
Second.
Your motion is second. Simpson.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
Mayor Protenke.
Yes.
Councilmember.
Yes.
Mayor Lekine.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Frito.
Yes.
Motion passed to seven to zero, next up, we have no resolutions, public comment, individuals attending in person may raise their hand. To indicate their desire to comment, individuals attending via teens may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes, I do not see anybody here from the public, is there anybody online who would like to speak?
There are no hands raised, mayor.
Okay, we'll move on to future agenda, agenda item authorizations. Does anybody have any items that they would like to see on the future agenda, including staff?
Of course I do.
Of course you do.
So one would be to add a ordinance limiting long-term rentals to the October twenty first agenda. And the second one would be a presentation by the Pike's Peak Small Business Development Center to the October twenty first agenda.
Didn't, weren't they just here not too long ago?
The Pike's Peak Small Business Development Center.
Oh, it was a Small Business Administration or something like that, somebody was here. Not too.
I don't, I don't.
It's a rodeo.
Yes, thank you. That is what I want.
So executive session on ten twenty one?
Correct, yes.
And then the other thing is a presentation also on ten twenty one?
Correct, yes.
Anybody have any issues with that? Okay. Um, any other future agenda items by council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to council comments. Uh, any have, any members have council comments?
I do. I have three.
Three.
Three. They're, they're short. They're short. The first one is the Pikes Peak area Agency on Aging celebrated its fiftieth anniversary in September. Just saying.
Council on Aging celebrated its fiftieth anniversary. I like that.
So there's still probably members in there.
The second thing is the same affiliation, the Area Agency on Aging has instituted a new program. Um, I'm, my question is whether or not we can put the flyer for the program on the website and the program is the following. It's trying to help seniors decorate their homes for the holidays. Whatever your holiday you choose to celebrate. They are looking for two things. One, seniors who are, want to raise their hand and say, yes, I'd like to have this service. And it would be help decorating and help taking down. So it's both sides of that. And the second thing that they're looking for is volunteers to help their seniors do that. Now, they're, they're only doing this to help Passau County to start since it's an initial program. They've done, never done it before, don't know, you know, how big, how small, whatever. But um, there's, there's a sign up. Um, there's a phone number and can we put the flyer on the town website? Is that something we do or no?
We don't typically for outside agencies, only because if we do it for one, then we have to do it for everyone and that would be a lot of flyers.
Got it. Yeah, really. Okay, well, I'm putting it out there. Um, and the, the third item I have is once again, our illustrious IT director is mentioned profusely by the seniors at the Advisory Council. They love you and thank you for volunteering for an additional Friday.
Thank you, Will.
That's it.
Okay. Uh, and the other council comments?
Um, just, just one comment and one question. Uh, one comment is a year ago today was um, the single largest loss of life in Israel since the Holocaust. So just wanted to mention that, um, in case you, you were living under a rock. Uh, and then question about the fire mitigation, the um, Monument uh, Fire District mentioned that they were running low on money for the multing, so something to consider. Um, if we wanted, I don't know if this is even possible, um, putting, budgeting some money to help out the MFD. I don't know if that's even possible, maybe not this year, but maybe next year.
Think you are going down a slippery slope finding another government agency.
That's true. Okay. All right, well.
But I do appreciate the sentiment.
It's fire mitigation.
I get it.
Cool.
I get it.
That's it.
Maybe there's a, we would have our own program that we would fund versus giving the money to somebody else, but I, you know, we can talk about that.
That's fair. Cool. That's it.
Okay, then we'll move on to. Okay.
Got one. The um, Greek week cleanup, I just you know, uh, great job setting that up and this past weekend. One question, um, do we as the, do we, meaning the town staff, do you guys coordinate? And with El Paso County to remind them to, you know, there's excessive amount of trash on both sides of Highway twenty five going through Monument and on the on and off ramps?
I would, I would imagine that we let them know about it when we notice it.
But yeah, that's all I'm asking is if we can send them or call them or send them an email. Be the squeaky wheel. I know that they were out. I, I noticed that they were out removing a whole bunch of uh, overgrowth on Glen Eagle um, the other week. So they didn't, I don't know if they were. I know I had submitted a, an email to them, but that was a while ago.
We received a complaint for some, some other report of notification that we would have that involved. Whichever agency that happened on to.
Last year and the year before that, I, when I talked to the then town manager, he said it was El Paso County and I contacted them about the overgrowth on Glen Eagle and that chain link fence that's falling apart, that's not going to prevent any vehicle from going over the curb and into the uh, the ditch that it probably needs to, you know, meet um, Monument guidelines of aesthetics and, because there's three different types of fencing in that area overall. But that chain link fenced is not going to prevent anything. So I was just wondering about, you know, and I know that's El Paso, some doing research, it was El Paso County's responsibility. So I'm looking for. Yeah. So all I'm, all I'm looking for is to be the squeaky wheel. That's all. Thanks.
Okay, uh, no more council comments, then we will go into our final item of the night, which uh, we will adjourn out of executive session if everybody's good with that. All right, so if uh, you'd like to bring us into executive session, that'd be great.
Make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to CRS twenty four dash six dash four two sub four sub B for a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions regarding special district services.
Second.
Motion a second, Ms. Simpson.
Mayor Pro Tim King.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpo.
And, and does this include adjourning? Uh, yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Kama.
Yes.
Mayor LeKine.
Yes.
And Councilmember Frito.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. We will wait for everybody to depart. And then we will go into executive session. Again.
Yeah.